Good evening. I'm going to call to order our Tuesday, April 19th special session, early special meeting. And I'd like to call roll call, please. Do we need a roll call? Let's do a roll call.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here, thank you very much. And so the purpose of our meeting today is the budget study session, and I'd like to turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to first start by just thanking you for being here and for making time, early time again. I know this is a great time, this is a great strain in terms of your time, so I appreciate your time for doing this. Our topic tonight is the budget, which is a very important topic, and it's one of the biggest decisions that this council makes. And so, again, I just want to thank you and please that we are all here this evening. As you can well imagine, the budget itself and the budget process takes a great deal of time, and it takes a great deal of attention from all hands on board. So, everybody has really been putting a great deal of work into preparing for this evening. And this is a step in the process. As you know, we've begun this back in December, even with the adoption of the budget calendar. This evening, there are three major areas that we'd like to cover. The first is the strategic plan, which will be the part of the six o'clock to seven o'clock timeframe. And as you know, that's a follow-up from the retreat from February 9th, the council retreat. We also then, starting after the regular meeting at seven o'clock, will like to cover the budget preparation process. That'll include methodology in terms of the budget for this year, some financials, and then a review of the council interests. Again, those are from the retreat. That's a list of items that the council asked staff to look into in terms of a potential inclusion in the budget. And finally, we will look at the CIP, and that too is a follow-up from the retreat, and some work that you did in between the retreat and now, we'll bring forward to our recommendation for what we're calling year one of the CIP. And in terms of some takeaways that we'd like to, that you will see and you will hear with the information that will be presented this evening, is you'll see that the city is doing very well financially. You'll also see that we're making many organizational improvements. It's an iterative process in terms of the areas that I just touched on, and also in terms of the organizational infrastructure. We have instituted several new processes, and tonight you'll have the opportunity to see that progress moving forward. Patrick O'Keefe is with us this evening, and he was with us for the retreat on the 9th, so I've asked him for his help so that he can lead the process, keep us on track, and allow each of the council members to participate fully without having to worry about the logistics and keeping track of the meeting process. So the desired outcomes for this evening are three: is the approval of the strategic plan in its current state, and again, it's an iterative process, so perhaps next year or down the road, we will continue to improve on that. Number two is review and understanding of the council interests, including the projects and the operational programs. Staff will ask for clarification where needed, and want to make sure that we have a full list from the council in terms of what should be considered for the budget. We will then make sure that we have pricing attached for each of those items, and bring them back to you at the next study session, which is scheduled for May 17th. Finally, we'd like final input on the CIP. You have seen this list now probably three or four times, and the last time was when you provided us with some input on that list. And so we've taken that information, and you'll see, we'll present that to you, and we'd like some sort of final input on that, so we can hopefully finalize that and include it in the recommended budget. That, again, you'll see as part of the May 17th study session. And before moving too far ahead, I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank staff. Again, this process takes many, many, many hours. It's really a team effort. We have a small team, but we're a mighty team, and we work very well together. And I think that you'll be pleased with the information that we are providing. So again, I'd just like to thank staff for their time and energy in making this information possible. Thank you.
So, good evening, mayor and council members, and glad to be back, and also glad to be following up with you on some very important work that you did at your last workshop. So as you know, but also for the benefit of the public who might be watching, the importance of having a strategic plan is one that sets a framework, a policy framework, that really sets you up for what you want to accomplish as a city, what activities you want your staff to focus on. And you'll see later in the evening that a number of the initiatives that are in your strategic plan end up in your operating budget or your capital improvement budget. So going through a strategic plan and adopting that, and then periodically updating it, is a way of kind of setting that policy framework that then rolls out in very real ways in your budget and in what your staff does on a daily basis. So, as set forth in this slide, it identifies key priorities. We establish that framework that I talked about, and we guide both the council and the staff through the budget process. As you recall, when you last discussed this in February, there were four major elements to your strategic plan: infrastructure and environment, healthy communities and public safety, fiscal sustainability, and inclusive governance. And as you may recall, those had slightly, some of them had slightly different wording, so you made some important word changes, I think, in particular around the governance one, as I recall. And so this is now the result of that work that you did before. And then, within each of those four major policy areas, there are a number of goals that then set the policy framework for your activities and your budget. So we'll go through each of these one at a time, and what I'll do is I'll just quickly paraphrase the major elements within each one, and then I'm going to stop and check with you and make sure that we have this correct, that we haven't left anything out, that this reflects the conversation that we had last time in February. So, starting again with the overall elements of infrastructure and environment, the major goals within that are preserve, upgrade existing city infrastructure, and to catch up on deferred maintenance, maintain city facilities, and sustain the city as clean and inviting. Fourth, to continue to build and enhance on a sustainable and resilient community by building in green and sustainable infrastructure. And then finally, to utilize technology to maximize efficiency and productivity for improved city operations. So let me stop there, and are any of those jump out at you as having any issues with them, or are they okay? Let's just stop and let you talk for a second and give us some feedback.
Any disagreement from the council? Anything changed since we all unanimously supported these? We all good? We're nodding. We're good.
We're good. All right. We'll move on then to the healthy communities and public safety, which is the next major strategic element. So under this, the major goals are foster opportunities for affordable housing, enhance safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists, promote health and well-being of children, youth, families, and adults of all ages and abilities, promote and sustain comprehensive and forward-looking environmentally green conscious community, prepare city staff and community members for inevitable natural disasters and emergencies, and provide comprehensive and innovative law enforcement services for crime, inform and educate the community around crime prevention. So any thoughts about any of these goals?
Marina?
Just because there's been a lot of discussions about affordable housing and maybe changing the conversation of it. Some have been talking about, instead of like low, low, low housing, you know, maybe change the conversation to entry-level housing, just more of a positive spin to it. And then I don't know if it fits in here, but there's a lot of opportunities for sharing housing, for more communal housing. I don't know if that fits into it. That's a whole different discussion, but to encourage more, you know, sharing resources of housing, perhaps more communal housing.
So if I may, are you saying that the item is written, the bullet point is written, reads a little sanitary, a little like, I don't know, businessy, doesn't really reflect the nuance of some of what you're saying, which is, I think it was, one term was entry-level housing, what was the other term?
You know, sharing housing, communal housing.
Shared housing. And I think those might fall under the word opportunities, but...
Opportunities, yeah.
Which is part of this, but Vice Mayor?
Could I make a suggestion? So maybe we have that sentence, but then we had a comma at the end that says, including entry-level housing, shared housing, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, just to open up those opportunities.
I like that. John?
With grant funding, that is a part of our mission and as a principle.
John?
Need to have a little humor in our study sessions here, I think. So, I don't watch movies very often, but I was fascinated by watching the other night Brooklyn, and they had a boarding house for the immigrants coming into Brooklyn, and I thought that was kind of an interesting way for single individuals to have a residence there. So, it's a heck of a thing, but what was the past might be the future again for housing. So, it's a good movie for the...
So John is offering, Councilmember Mueller's offering, is bunkhouse available for rooming? So the suggested edit to this item is, comma, including entry-level housing, comma, shared housing, comma, et cetera. That's our proposed edit to this item, our proposed clarification to this item. Are we good, Alex? We good? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, on bullet point six, it's... Oh, I'm sorry, we're one by one. I apologize.
So on the affordable housing one, that's important because later on in the evening, that item comes back, and the ideas that you just put out there will help staff in clarifying what it is that you're looking for. And so, Councilmember Mueller, as you said, those words are standard words that are used in the industry, low, very low, and so what do they mean? And so I think what you've done is you've added what it means to Half Moon Bay, it means this type of housing. So that's an important distinction. Are there any other comments on any of these? A lot of bullet points on these that have some very important quality of life elements to them.
Brief comment on item, bullet point six there. I think we actually have an agenda item tonight related to that, so we are continuing to strengthen and ensure that our law enforcement officers are being managed by superior officers, and I think that's on our agenda tonight. And it's a budget addition too in there, a small budget addition.
So there's a linkage right there between that policy and the budget. Other questions or comments on those particular bullets, goals? We're good. Okay, on to a very important one. Element fiscal sustainability. So the first bullet is to practice sound and responsible financial management while providing government services that address the needs. The second is to support and sustain a business environment that contributes to economic prosperity and revenue generation, and improves economic well-being. And then thirdly, to promote a balanced economic development approach that retains and attracts and supports businesses, and also supports a diverse business environment, including tourism, coastal resources, farmland cultivation, and conservation. So this had some discussion in the February meeting, as I recall. Does this capture that discussion, and are there thoughts and comments about it?
Any comments from the council? We good?
We are aligned.
So then moving to the last one of inclusive, of governance, so our apologies here that there are so many bullet points under this one, but I'll go through them quickly here. First of all, to manage the operations of the city as being engaged, collaborative, and responsive, professional, accountable, and inclusive. Those are all very key words. Secondly, to emphasize a high level of community engagement. There was a lot of discussion about that in February. Building mutually beneficial, innovative, and collaborative community partnerships, also a point of discussion in February. Third, to provide organizational development that invests in leadership skills development and other human resources to attract and retain highly qualified and diverse municipal workforce. And there was a wonderful presentation by your city manager about the quality of your workforce, so that's a key one, to try and build on that and retain what you have. Next, to maintain accuracy, consistency, and frequency in the public's communications, and increase the city's ability to build credibility and mutual trust with the community. Some very important conversation went on about that. Next, to provide and manage a repository of city records that are easily accessible to the general public, seems like a detail, but is extremely important for many cities. Promote diversity by improving knowledge of and accessibility to city services among the Latino community, with emphasis on bilingual access and inclusiveness and participation, also something that you spent time on. Continue and enhance transparency and accountability, very key words, with community members providing easy access to information, a helpful and informed staff, meaningful opportunities to participate in the city's decision-making process and community activities. So those are all really important elements of how you're running the city and how you're including people in it. Any thoughts or comments about that, about those bullets?
This feels like alignment, motherhood, apple pie, kind of hard not to nod your head at these things. I'm just thinking to myself, there is, I'll hold my comment to the end, but I think we are aligned, so thank you. Affirmed.
Okay. So I think that's basically, unless we've missed something, I think that's basically all of your elements. So...
Okay, so since we've now gone through them all, then I guess I won't hold my comments.
All right, go ahead.
The comment to have is, I think, I think overall, it will be really, really helpful for our community to know that these are the things that we said are strategically important. However, there's a lot of them. And I'm not suggesting that we reduce or summarize, I don't think that would be helpful, but I know this is available on the website. Maybe when we redo the website, we have these called out, and when you use web content, you can organize things in a way that's easier to get through more quickly. I think it's important that people are aware of these things. And also, when we complete our process and complete our budget, I think it would be good to look back through these. I don't think we can hit on them all. I know we intend to, but it'd be nice to say, we're doing 37 things this year, and it touches on these priorities for the city. That might be nice to be able to do as a follow-up. The more we can help the community understand the things that this council is saying are priorities, I think the better to understand the intent of us to, that we have to serve the community in the way that they want us to serve them. So that's my comment on that.
Yeah, I think it also might be helpful to be able to demonstrate in what way we reached any of these goals. So if we have a goal about, let's say, allowing the city to more effectively collaborate and communicate with, that sentence is gone, but at any rate, with any of the bullet points, if we could have something that says, okay, this was part of our strategic plan, we just did X, and X has allowed us to provide more affordable housing, which is one of the goals that we had in our strategic plan. So an update.
I think that's... I think that's a great idea, and I know that one way we might do that is, when we have a staff report, an agenda item, if it seems applicable, that we actually have a little section that says, this relates to strategic plan goal, you know, A, B, C, or whatever it is. Or it's fulfilling, you know, this element in our strategic plan. Just a little, maybe just one sentence, just says, ties it back to something.
This council is well ahead of staff and right in line with staff, and the comments that you've shared are exactly the, what we'd like to do with these, so that we can align our work as we do these with the budget document. You will see some goals that each department has. We'll try to align them with these strategic initiatives moving forward. And yes, we have an interest in listing the initiative or the element that each of the staff reports or the items that come to the council is aligning or is supporting. So we'll also use it for recruitment and retention purposes, so that when we are doing our recruitment, we let people know what's important to this council and to this community moving forward. So yes, we will use those, and weave them into all the work that we're doing.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I always felt that, you know, the public always wants results from government, and they just don't understand the complexity of getting the results. So I think if we have a number of these, as the mayor mentioned, if we could, as Vice Mayor mentioned, show some brief results, and at least that there when the public says you guys don't do anything, you know? And so I think that's very valuable. And, you know, again, if we think we can pull this whole thing off, we should send it to Washington DC, really, because we all understand the way America is right now with the hostilities of election years. So let's try to do our own local thing, anyway.
I thought Councilmember Penrose made a good point, so not just tying what we do back to the strategic plan, but, you know, periodic updates.
That's correct. We'd like to, we'd like to do that, and as you will see a little bit later in this evening, what we have been calling a strategic plan was the beginnings of what is a strategic plan. And so it's, again, it's an iterative process, and we will continue to do, as you have been getting reports back on that. But a lot of the things that are on the strategic plan, looking back, really are CIP projects, which is okay, because that's what's important to the council, but we can certainly start to report that information back to you on a regular basis.
That would be great. And so all good comments. I hear, see nodding heads, so consensus from the council on that as well. Let me explain the microphone thing, so we all know. So whatever's going on, when one council member's speaking, if another council member goes to speak, and sometimes we would put our mic on in advance to wait for our turn, that will turn the other person off. So that's kind of, so we kind of just be patient with, let everyone have their turn, and that's how that works. Yeah.
So it looks like staff did a really good job of articulating what the comments we heard at the February retreat, and given the time, there is a section that we weren't sure whether we would put it here under strategic plan, or whether we'd put it under the budget. So if it's the council's pleasure, we can certainly deal with that now, if you'd like.
And that section is?
That's the, what we call in the council interests.
That's definitely, I think it's, yeah, let's use the time. That's good.
And it aligns very well with the strategic plan and the strategic elements. So if you'll just give us a moment to load that up, we'll...
Please, yes.
So to tee this up a little bit while they're switching PowerPoints, so as you recall at the February meeting, that there was interest in talking about capital improvement projects, but there were also, there was also a strong interest on the part of council about talking about things that weren't yet on the capital improvement program. And that, we have developed a list that was in the report from that February session that was called City Council Identified Interests and Priorities. And that was a list of, thank you, Alex, that was a list of 26 items that I won't read through here, and they're too small for you to see well, but we'll get into them in more detail in a second. And what staff did was to take those 26 items, and they broke them into three different groups. So one group appears in your operating budget as operating budget enhancements, or could appear in your operating budget, if you agree with that tonight. The second group appears in your capital improvement program. Yeah. Yeah. We're shifting on the fly.
I think we're all set. Please continue.
All right, good. All right, so to reel back quickly to the beginning, so you had a list of 26. Staff then broke those into three groups, one for operating budget, one for capital improvement program, and then the third is a list of things that staff needs to hear some comments from you tonight, that helps clarify what it is that you want for each of those items, so that they could do some additional work and figure out where they go.
Understood. And then to the city manager, this is also the opportunity, if there were in, if there was something that would come off the list, we would voice that opinion, or something to add to the list, or is it smart, is it a smart move to say this is the list?
We want to make sure that this is a list, and if there's something you'd like to add, that's exactly what we'd like to do this evening.
Okay, so is there, so what process do we want to use right now to review the list? Do we want to go with clarifications? Could someone facilitate that process?
That's what I'm going to be doing, is running through each of those three lists. And so as you see individual projects come up on, regardless of what list they're on, that'll be your opportunity then to say, yes, that should stay on, or no, it shouldn't, or we should add to this list, or we should change the wording of this, or the nature of the intent of it, whatever. Does that work? Okay. So then, starting with the first list, then, of capital improvement projects, so you have the parts master plan, and since this last discussion, staff has developed some preliminary cost estimates about what these might entail in the way of expenditures. So this is from your capital improvement project budget now. $165,000 to develop the plan. The second is to assess crosswalks at $85,000. The third is to the Smithfield totlot and ball field at about $220,000. The fourth is bike and pedestrian master plan at $220,000. The next is community garden assessment and implementation at $22,000. The next is solar panels on public buildings at $33,000. The next is electric vehicle charging stations at $44,000. The next is downtown free Wi-Fi at $137,500. The next is poplar beach access stairs at $440,000. The next is bike trail extension south of Camerons at $330,000. The next is sidewalk tree liability at $161,500. And then the last is the Filbert speed mitigation, which has been completed. So are there questions about any of those?
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, this list is, you've already seen this list. We provided this to you before we sent out the list for your input. So these have already been included in the CIP, and you've already provided input on these. We just wanted to map those back for you, to let you know that the list that you provided to us on February 9th has already been incorporated, and these, these from that list went into the CIP. And then we'll show you where the other ones have gone as well.
I see, so these are already included in the CIP. So the question from the facilitator is, is there, do you, are you asking us if we have questions about these items, or is this an information item that's saying, FYI, these are included in the CIP?
It sounds like information at this point, if you've already gone through them all.
So the thing, I know the things I am most interested are here, so I can nod and say, this works for me. And you got, Councilmember Penrose?
Yeah, there are a couple of things that you didn't read out, and maybe it was, maybe they're not, maybe this is a typo, or maybe you just didn't read them out, but increased bike racks, that's orange on my copy.
We're on this one right now. This next page. We've got to flip it.
But isn't this, doesn't this orange supposed to tell...
So that shows up in, I'm sorry if I cut you off. Does my mic also cut off?
Yeah, it's the...
I apologize.
It's our system, so the person who's ever fastest on the draw gets to talk.
Well, this is a good way of the...
Let me ask you to...
So if you see, see the next list is up there at the...
You know what, there's a good point. Is there a one-to-one mapping of the rainbow list and the item, thank you, Dr. Penrose, is there a one-to-one mapping of the items on the rainbow list versus the summary we're looking at here, or are there items that are not included?
So that was the attempt. The attempt of the rainbow list, that's in black and white. So the first list was the list, and then the rainbow list was intended to be the mapping and of where those went. So if you go to the rainbow list, the red is the one that needs more clarification that we've not yet gotten to. The orange is those which have been incorporated into the CIP, which is what Patrick is just going over now. The green is the operational enhancements that we will get to very soon, so, but, now, Alex is whispering to me that there probably should have been yet a separate color of items that were under $30,000, that really don't make it to any one of these, or does it go into operational, Alex, the bikes? So the, so it goes into operational, you won't see it on these lists, but they've been incorporated into the op...
So bike racks, for instance, is under $30,000, so I won't see it on the second list. Gotcha.
Thanks.
Councilmember Penrose, thank you for that catch, and my attempt to clarify, that did not clarify, but I appreciate that, so that's very helpful. So we are affirming that, so there's no questions on this list, and it was FYI, and we'll move on to the next page. Oh, Councilmember Frasier?
Are we adding things to the things that could be potentially under $30,000?
We will get to that.
Okay.
Okay, so then the next list are items that are operational enhancements. So the Parks and Recreation Committee role at $25,000. Neighborhood meetings at $10,000 for initial costs. Grant rider at $50,000. Human Services Fund and Committee, $25,000 plus staffing time. Trash cans on Main Street at $30,000. Poplar Street Speed Bumps at $30,000. And Bike and Pedestrian Committee to coincide with the Bike and Pedestrian Plan, which is at $10,000. So a total of 180 to implement all of those. So questions or comments on those?
And again, this is affirming that we've gone through these, and any need for clarification. And I think if there's additions or changes, that's, that's a separate discussion, just any clarifications. I think we're all nodding. I was just looking real quick. Yeah, I think we're good.
That's correct, and you've not seen these numbers before. Council has not seen these numbers. They saw the ones for the, you've seen the ones for the CIP, but you've not seen these numbers.
And so when we talk about any potential items that need to be added, we can also talk about these numbers if they should be different? Or do you, or do you want that now?
We'll come, we'll come to that. We wanted to first present to you what we have already, what we've heard from you. Again, the attempt was to try to map this back to the list that you saw, that they were all been addressed at one place or another.
The rainbow list?
The rainbow list.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, then the final list are items that need some additional clarification. So I'll just summarize them, and then let's go back and hit each one, because staff does need to hear some comments from you. So the first is affordable housing strategy. The second is increased involvement with Latino community. The third is increased translation services. Fourth is Spanish-speaking ombudsman. And the last is support repair coastal trail bridges. So let's go back to affordable housing strategy. Earlier, there were good comments about what that means. There are some potential things that could be done here in a variety of different ways of, of, of pursuing, creating affordable housing, or maintaining affordable housing. So any thoughts that you have in that regard would be helpful.
So discussions of the council, looking for not, not the strategy itself, but what does putting the, what does a strategy look like as a thing we put together? What do you, is it correct characterization?
Yeah. What we'd like to do is bring back all of these options to the council at the next budget study session, but we'd like to be able to provide some cost estimates associated with each of these strategies, so that you can decide which ones you'd like to move forward. But we need more clarification on these items, because we don't know exactly what the council's interested in, so that we can provide a cost estimate for each.
So to the council, what does putting together affordable housing strategy look like to you?
So I'll just start off, and perhaps Councilmember Penrose can, can fill in. I think initially, and we've talked about this a little bit, we need, we need a workshop. And I think we need two. One, we need a workshop that talks about an overall strategy of how we can work on more entry-level, moderate housing, identify different options. And also, because we already have an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, have a separate workshop for those people who are interested in doing that. How can they do that? Let's help them, because we already have this policy. So what is this involved? Even if it's, you know, modeling, these are accepted models. And, and two, and I think part of an overall workshop, we should have a discussion about, is there anything to incentivize, anything we want to do with affordable housing? Because we do have that, those monies that are designated for some entry-level housing. Does that kind of sum some of it up? You could probably add some more.
Yeah, a couple of other thoughts. One is passing some sort of an ordinance where we give priority to Half Moon Bay, bona fide Half Moon Bay residents, so that we're not, not, if we use county money to do affordable housing, the county is willing to allow us to take up a very high percentage back for the city residents. If the city is building it, then the city can make it 100% city residents. Other issues like permit costs can be discussed at the workshop, you know? How do we, how do we mitigate that so that developers are more willing to develop? Trying to get the Coastal Commission to make priority, affordable housing, what are permits a priority? So a bunch of issues like that.
Be incentivizing.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I think a workshop is a good idea, a general workshop. I'd like to know, you know, what are our needs, you know, based on, you know, the workforce we have, the, the mix of housing stock? What, what are the needs? What might be opportunities, given, you know, existing funding that we have available, and, you know, land, city-owned land? What might we do with, what are the grant opportunities out there? What might we do with a mix of our money and grant money? Or what might we do with a new, separate, you know, funding source? And then just having a, you know, a strategy that has goals, objectives, tactics, and then tying it to, to funding. And as opportunities arise, being able to take advantage of those opportunities. And get input from, you know, people who, who live and work here about, you know, what their needs are. Open it up, you know, for public participation. But, so I see it as multi-component, and probably multi-year. And just something that sort of, you know, guides us based on, on funding and need. I don't know how else to say it, but...
Councilmember Mueller.
Thank you. I know staff has plenty to do, and I'll look out towards Daniela, but I don't know, do, excuse me, I don't know if we have an inventory on substandard lots in the city. I'd be interested to see what is available for land, number one. And number two, I think you'd have to include Coastside County Water District in this process a little bit, to see the availability of, of five-eighths or three-quarters, five-eighths hopefully, water meters that would cost, whether priority or non-priority, that kind of thing. So I think they need to be included in the discussion for the future.
So my comment is, I don't know that it's a clarification, but I think if I state it, clarify it to myself at least, but I'm trying to capture some of what I'm hearing up here. It's, it's to develop a strategy, meaning a plan, so the work, the project is, the work would be to develop a plan that helps us understand, that includes an assessment of our, of our current situation, understanding tools available to us that we can leverage, because we don't have many as a city, but other, other tools outside the city that we can leverage, other grants and other, other, other tools at our disposal. And that's to develop a strategy that we can implement that has, I would say, hopefully some quick wins that can benefit the community, and then some longer-term things as well. And so I'd say this item, to me, sounds like developing that, that plan. I'd like to say fixing the housing issue would be very quick, and I know it's not, it's just not. So I think the first, the first right step is to put all those pieces together, and then we can figure out, out of all those pieces, what's the smart move forward, then get some traction on this. Is that fairly accurate? Okay, good, great, thank you. That's our, is that clarification enough? Okay, thank you, thank you. Next item up for bid?
Okay, so the next item then is increased involvement with Latino community.
So we, is there a presentation, or just a discussion? Any clarifications, right?
We're looking for clarification on each of these items.
So, so I think we've made a fair start to be more inclusive in Half Moon Bay for the Latino community, and some of the good things we're doing include having Christina here this evening, should there be any need for translation. Also, there's some, some, we have the NET Academy coming up in Spanish, so we're doing some things there. I don't know that this is necessarily a project, unless, maybe it's an internal project, to make sure that the things we're doing are inclusive, and that we're, that we're covering our bases on inclusiveness for Spanish-speaking populations, so that they feel access. And if there's something extra we should do, something more that's just targeted toward the Latino community, maybe we need to be aware of that, or allow for that. But I think it's weaving this through the fabric of what we do as a city, and for all of our functions, so that, how do I put this? So that the services we provide to the community are accessible to everybody, and that there is awareness among the entire community of the services that are available to them. And I would venture to guess that on the latter, that probably is not the case. There's a whole divide that we need to overcome there, and we're doing a lot of things in the right direction, but perhaps not a project, unless there's some other ideas, but more so a thread that weaves through everything we do as a city. Any other comments or thoughts?
And maybe to put a finer point on it, just continue to look for opportunities to engage all of our community. I think we've, we've done some things with putting different translations out there. So I don't know what the missing pieces are, but to continue to look to those opportunities, to make sure everyone feels inclusive and engaged.
My feeling is that one of the things that we haven't mentioned here is asking the Latino community what they need from us. We have all sorts of ideas, and some of mine have been translating everything that we put out into Spanish. I've said that, I don't know how many times. But the idea of possibly having a Spanish ombudsman, somebody from the Latino community who would be reporting regularly to City Hall about what it is that this Latino community You could do it with a survey, or you could do it with just having a representative from the community. It seems to me you, we're better off asking them what they want from us than we are telling them what we're going to give them. That's all. It's a philosophy, it's not a, you know...
So I think that's good, and I think it's a really good idea. So your suggestion, if I try to recap, put some boundaries around that, is, is if there were a project item here, it might be a community assessment with, with, help us understand specifically what that segment of our community's needs are, what their concerns are, what their needs are. At the same time, we could use that to help educate them for what's, what's available within the city as well. I know I've had a lot of conversations like this with people in the community, and a lot of the things that get expressed are helpful to know, but also a lot of them are things that we do not provide, right? It might be a county thing, or it might be just not. But it's good to know. Perhaps the timing for doing a project like that would be after the Spanish language NET program, so that the attendees of that program could help carry, go out, go out to the community, and, and could bring, perhaps one of their projects might be bringing back some of that information, because at that point, they will have had four or five weeks of, of immersion in what we do as a city, and have some more perspective. So just an idea about timing for that.
Ambassadors.
Yep. So is that enough clarification on that item? Okay, great. Great. Okay, the next item, please.
So actually, these next two, I think you've touched on already, and that is translation services and Spanish-speaking ombudsman. So those really can be elements of that number-two item of increasing involvement. Does that make sense?
If I could just comment, I think we've dealt with the ombudsman for now, and that might come back, that might come back based on the assessment. I think the, a question regarding the translation service is, the council adopted a budget to provide translation services for, not for every council meeting. We've since changed that policy, because count, staff has, was trying to guess at when we would need them, and that didn't work very well. So now we have Christina here for each of our meetings, and if there's not a need, she's been going home, or no longer providing the service, if there's no one to whom to write a service. So we just want some direction about that, because we've heard comments about having someone here at all meetings, so that would have to increase the budget for all meetings. We've done that, because we haven't used much for this current fiscal year, whether Christina or someone else stays for the entire meeting or not. So we just need clarification about that. I think that my recommendation would be for all meetings and as needed. But again, someone might come for an item at, the last item on the agenda, who might need the translation. So we just need some clarification on that.
So I concur, the approach of all meetings or as needed, but I think that the need will change, will increase after we have the, hopefully it will change. We have an attendee from our last NET Academy here today, so thank you for being here. And so hope of two, pardon me, two. Oh, sorry, hello, thank you, thank you. And so hopefully the need will increase after the Spanish Language Academy, but I support that direction. Is there any other discussion on the council?
Yeah, I was just going to say, just about the same thing you said, it's a chicken and the egg thing. The, the more you can provide, the more you will get involvement. And I don't see that it's going to cost us that much over this next year to be prepared for increased involvement.
It also sends a message that, as we communicate, and I'm sure, if we have, I'm sure we have, if we haven't, let's make sure we do, that Spanish translation is available at our city council meetings, and that, of course, some of our, some of our materials are available and published and produced in Spanish as well. I think it says an important message about accessibility. I don't want, I don't want to be in a situation where somebody has to request it, right? That's an extra step. I want to have a situation where it is available to people in the community, and I think as word gets out, that, that's, that shows our good faith effort to engage, and that will help hopefully bring some more good faith effort coming the other direction. Comments? Councilmember?
Yep. May I ask the city manager at your city manager meetings, is there any idea how many cities are providing that service?
I don't have a good sense, but I don't think it's very many.
And I think it's probably none, I would guess, but I would also say that our community's 35% Latino, so I think it's appropriate for us.
The, I'm not hearing you, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. I'm not hearing you extend this, for example, to the Planning Commission at this time.
No, I'm not, not yet. No, I'm not, not yet.
Just for clarification, thank you.
And the last item?
So then the last item is support repair of coastal trail bridges. So thoughts and comments about that?
Sure. I think we do, is there, so is there any clarification for this item?
Yeah.
Please, Vice Mayor?
So, we have several bridges within the city limits that serve the coastal trail, that provide north-south connections. And we have one new bridge, in great shape, but there are, you know, a few other bridges. Seymour is going to be replaced, we're already working on that, but there's, there's the, there's the bridge that's up by the state campground that's in serious need of repair. The bridge that's along Marada Road, looks like it might be threatened. So, you know, we might want, generally speaking, as part of the bike and pedestrian master plan, maybe we need a coastal trail plan for inside the city limits because, you know, so it's not just a local sort of recreational commuter asset, it's an economic asset, you know, it brings visitors, it serves people who stay in the hotels. So something that's, you know, longer term, that identifies the various components, the trails, the bridges, there are amenities, you know, trash cans, you know, restrooms, whatever. But, so have a sort of a general plan about how we're going to, you know, address deferred maintenance, what are potential funding sources, and then, you know, a list of prioritized, you know, projects and that that can feed into the, you know, the capital improvements program. You know, identify, you know, potential grant funding and understand when those cycles for grants happen. And it's kind of important right now, there is a bill, AB 2444, that would propose to put a state parks bond on the ballot in 2016. It's more than likely going to have to wait till 2018, but the language of the bill states that projects to be funded need to be identified in parks master plans or in, you know, bikeway plans, that sort of thing. So it's, it's important for us to have our plans done and ready so that we can take advantage of new grant opportunities. You know, so it's mapping, it's project prioritization. So I know that's kind of general, I'm kind of all over the map here, but, you know, these, the coastal trail is really important for people and the bridges are an important component of that. We want to be able to maintain north, you know, lateral access to, to along the coast. So, does that, does that help at all?
Alex, do you have enough?
I think so. So identify the plan and get our resources in order to, we're working with multiple agencies.
Right.
Along those two, the bridges, not the city, it's not the city's ownership of those bridges. Putting that together and then if we have to get a logage or whatever, once we have a plan, we can start figuring that out.
Yeah.
Great. That is our list. I'm sorry, but councilmember Mueller, please.
Included Vice Mayor's comments, I think, on that coastal trail issue. I believe there's some ownership issues too on property that we have to continue to assess to who has ownership and where it goes and whose property it'll be on.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I think might as well, if it's not too much, to put it in that ownership.
Great.
So then the last question is, anything missing?
Is anything missing? Are there any other items to consider, including and also perhaps any budgetary elements to add in? So councilmember Fraser looks very anxious to hit the button.
I am, thank you. And I just want to know, do you want to hear it now or do you want to hear it in the next meeting? Right now, okay. And you hit almost everything that I had, was looking at on my list. Do you want to add more benches? And I know we've, we've got some projects with benches on coastal, but I mean benches around downtown. Couple of things, in, in meeting with the seniors, they do their walking and along their paths, sometimes they just need a bench to sit in. So I know there's, whether it's on each block or there is, there is an average that it's so many feet, but they would like that, they kind of shared where their, their paths are that they walk around town. So if we could put more benches into that in the downtown. And garbage cans were requested too, because many people do walk their little dogs at night and they want to have an easy place to put the pooper bags, they're being responsible. We've got a grant writer in here?
Yes.
We do at $50,000. That may be different depending on the structure that we look at, but that was a placeholder for now, yes.
The other is a, a safety workshop. And this is maybe a general, and I'm looking over to Lieutenant Muncie, maybe a workshop that we could hold to the public that could talk to them about creating a neighborhood watch in the area. Just those reminders of, you know, lock your car up, watch out for things like that. I know there's been some activity lately and they're, they're probably crimes of opportunity. You leave your purse in your car, your car is unlocked. But perhaps helpful reminders if we could sponsor a workshop in coordination with law enforcement and that might encourage other neighborhoods to do a neighborhood watch if they wish. And last is health and human services budget item. And this is something we had a long time ago and we had stopped, I think at the time, 10, 12 years ago, it had about 25K in there, maybe 75, $100,000. And that is for the purpose of nonprofits to apply for a grant. And in the past, it's been, I mean, even the state parks applied to a grant to get a mobility wheelchair so people could access the sand. And they were anywhere from $1,000 to a couple of thousand dollars. And that might be a place that we can, since we do have great economic times, this might be another opportunity to put money back into the community for some of the different nonprofits.
And councilmember Fraser, two pages ago, we have that listed currently as 25,000-plus staff time that we've set aside as a, as a potential.
I'd like to, I'd like to... I'd like to increase that because that was $25,000 back in 2002, 2003.
In 1995.
In 1995, too. And if we could pump that up to about 100K?
I would support that. And if, and if we, I think if we have to have with that a policy and criteria for awarding funds.
Absolutely.
With boundaries around that, that would be, we'd have to have that policy come to the council, we'd have to review it and adopt it so that there are, there are fair and equitable criteria. I think that would be really fair.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other items for input or comments or question? I have one semi-random thing to consider. It was on my wish list for the renovation of MacDutra Park, but didn't make the cut. I would very much like there to be a flagpole at MacDutra Park. I don't know if that's feasible, but I'd like to have that included in our consideration and budget for it. I think that it's already a hub of our downtown and I think it would make it even more iconic. So that's the random item I want to add.
City Hall?
There is one at City Hall, which is almost at MacDutra Park, but is not. Councilmember Penrose?
Yeah, is this where I bring up art in the park?
This, this would be the place.
All right. I would like to see art in the park. We have concerts in the park. Many, many cities, Los Altos, Santa Barbara, Martinez, Maribou, Newport Beach, Cambria, Capitola, Palo Alto, bunches of others, have art festivals, art fairs on a regular basis. Some of them are annual, most of them are monthly, at least during the summer months. And we have an opportunity, when we have a concert in MacDutra Plaza, to close off this Kelly Street between Main and Parrisima and place pop-up tents on the north side of Kelly there, opposite the plaza, where we invite artists to come in and sell their wares. Now, there are some complications with this. One is that you have to decide how we pick the artists and my feeling is it should be anybody on the coast side is welcome to participate. It should be a juried affair so that there is somebody overseeing who gets chosen so we don't have 10 people selling earrings and two people selling pots. We should be encouraging the sale of things that are not available on Main Street so that the Main Street merchants can feel excited. And the ones that I've spoken to so far about this are very excited about it. They think increased foot traffic will be wonderful for their businesses as well. We have to look at the issue of what we charge the street vendors, whether we make them pay for the pop-up tents or whether we provide them. We have to, of course, provide personnel to take down pop-up tents, put them up, people to monitor the closing of the street, people to actually close the street off. I think it's critical because we talk about, all the time, about how much we want to revitalize downtown Half Moon Bay. And what we haven't done is anything to revitalize downtown Half Moon Bay. It's time to step up and try to do something that's fun, that will make everybody that lives here happy, that will help our artists out. And we have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of artists on our coast side, fabulous artists. It will make the street a more lively place. It might even encourage businesses to stay open Friday nights. God only knows if we could get them to do that. But I'd like to put some money into the budget and ask staff to look at that, the issues, and to look at the costs for all the things that I'm talking about and come back to us.
Thank you. So, any other comments? I do have a couple of comments. So I would support that, so I would support carving out some budget for something called Art in the Park. That would be pretty super modest, but I'll tell you why. I, I don't, I'm not aligned with your description of art in the park. So I would have, so while I would budget for something, like I would budget for something for Parks and Rec that we may or may not do, we still have to define the details. I think there's a whole lot of, lot of requirements we have to go to, go through for the city, I don't think the city, so the way I think it should happen is a group of artists should get together, form their group of artists and say, we're 25 artists and we want to have an event in Half Moon Bay and this is how we're going to do it and, and work together, we're going to display art and yada, yada. That would, a great, an example of that on steroids would be like Pumka Festival, which is not a city-run event. In fact, I don't know that there are any city-run events where the city provides the venue for artists to sell, sell things. I think if artists would organize and have an event, that, that would be artist-driven or anybody, right? Somebody wanted, wanted to have some, some booths on the street to sell things, arts and crafts or whatever, I think that's driven by those individuals. That being said, I saw kind of a different concept in different cities where it was art in the park and it was just that. It was easels and art on display where people could stroll through and see the art and they might get a business card from the artist and that's what it was. It wasn't a fair where art was being sold to the public, it was more so you were experiencing, art was part of you experiencing the town. And that model is something I would be very supportive of, I think, I think it's a really good idea. If it's going to be commerce, then I think that is, should be driven by the group of artists who organize themselves to put on an event like that. And were that event to coincide with music in MacDutra Plaza, I think that's great timing for that. But unless I'm mistaken, I don't think the city hosts events like this, hosts fairs and festivals. Maybe, maybe we could change that, but I don't think we have done that in the past and that's my understanding anyway.
Yeah, I, I agree. We have not done it in the past and I think that's possibly one of the problems with our town, that we are not providing a venue for people to come and have a good time and spend their money. No artist that I know of is going to take the time to set up a booth, stay there all day long and display their art. It's, it's, it's not going to happen. It's, we're not that kind of a city. We're not selling $5,000 paintings. I'm talking about things that people can come in and they can buy a necklace for $10, they can buy a pot for $20. I don't see why the artists have to be the ones to organize that. If we're, if we're serious about making this a fun place to be, I, I don't see why we can't take some leadership in it and say, okay, gee, I'd love to see that. So I guess we differ in our opinion about, you know, what, what would be fun, but to me, when I go to the farmer's market, I like to see the jewelry there and I like to see people selling soap there. And it's not a big deal, it's, it's, it's not a difficult thing to organize. I, you know, I'd be happy to organize it. I don't have any problem with doing that work. If the city doesn't want to pay for pop-up tents, I, I think that we could ask the artists to pay for their own pop-up tents. The only reason to have the city do it would be to have some control over uniformity and the visual aspect.
Might I suggest, and I'd like to hear from the other council members, I require to hear from the other council members, that the, might I suggest that, I think, I think, I know you have an interest, I believe you have an interest, I want to move sort of quickly on this, I might suggest that we take a more methodical approach and consult the San Mateo County Arts Commission on their recommendation for something like this. And second, second piece, as one piece, as an outside, you know, to get some other input in the second piece would be some examples from other communities. How, how do other similar communities host these events? Because I, I would, I think, I would think it would be aligned with not as a, as a festival unless they run festivals and then do we become the community, as a council, maybe we, maybe we change our policy, maybe we run festivals. And I just don't think we're organized that way and, which is why I'm suggesting more of it's more experiential. But the city manager has a comment?
Yeah. I think that I have enough information in terms of what some of the interests are and perhaps what we can do is, we'll flesh out some of this information, bring it back to you, hopefully we'll have most of it by the next meeting, including, including some costing. And perhaps we'll provide you two or three options, because I'm hearing two or three different types of models that we might use and we'll bring that information forward. Again, all of this will come forward to you on the May 17 meeting and council will have an opportunity to vote on each one of these individually.
Thank you. Councilmember Penrose, thank you for your added item. I do hope some version of it comes forward. And there's no other comments on this from the city council? No, with that, I'm, we're going to recess this meeting, close this meeting, we're going to take a five-minute break before we start our regular meeting. Thank you. Oh, and thank you to staff for, and our, facilitator for all your, your fine work putting this together. I, I know it's 11 pages, but I'm sure it was more than 11 pages with the work, so we certainly appreciate that. So thank you for your hard work and we will convene in about five minutes.